All right, I would like to call to order the Monday, November 20th, meeting of the City of Manona City Council. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Alder, please.
Here.
Alder Morse.
Here.
Alder Wood.
Here.
Alder Ramacher.
Here.
Alder Bernstein.
Here.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, is there a motion to approve the minutes of the November 6th meeting?
I'll move.
Second. Any corrections or additions? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes are approved, there are no appearances. Next item is a public hearing to receive public input regarding the proposed 2024 operating budget. I hereby declare the public hearing open. I don't know if anyone, is there anyone who would like to speak in the audience? Apparently not. Well, then we will declare, I will declare the public hearing closed. There is no consent agenda, moving on to council action items. I've decided to move up item 2A under new business to the beginning here, as Mr. Blonge needs to drive back to Milwaukee, Milwaukee area tonight, so, and then we'll go back to the regular order. Item 2A, consideration of Resolution 23-11-2654 authorizing the issuance and sale of 6.7 million in taxable general obligation refunding bonds, Series 2023B, put forth by the Finance Director, and this is starred for immediate approval.
Move to suspend the rules and take this out of order.
Second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Is there a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
I'll second.
Okay, Mark?
Yeah, so just why this needs to be refunded. So this is Garden, this is a TIF related to, TIF 5, which some people know as Garden Circle, some people know as Heritage. So, back in the day, I don't know if people remember, there was a bunch of buildings, city took ownership of them, we had to pay to demo them and clear the land, so we didn't have any increment coming in, a lot of capitalized interest cost coming in. So then, we had a five-year band, and then we decided to do a 20-year note after that. There's also TIF 5 at the time, the boundaries included the bowling alley and the post office. And so a lot of the projections at the time is they would be by this time redone. And so that didn't happen. So what happened is this, the cash flow is not there, so we have a donor district, and this is just the cash flow payments, the payments are more than the cash flow coming in. So this is refinancing to meet whatever cash flow is coming in, about an eight hundred eighty-seven thousand combined with the donor district, to meet that requirement. So this will meet that requirement, we'll pay the TIF off, we won't need any money to transfer from any other fund. So we'll meet that, and we'll pay it off before the TIF is closed, so this is just kind of refinance and fit it into our cash flow.
Well done, thank you, sir. You remembered like I did, that's-
I was out of breath and just walking back.
[laughing]
Certainly happy to answer any questions. Congratulations to the city again on a tremendous double A-plus rating, always really proud of that. It garners us a lower interest cost in the credit markets, and there's a lot of people out there who would like to put Manona bonds and notes in their portfolio. So this is a taxable issue because we've got guarantees with respect to developers' agreement. That's the reason it's not tax exempt, and you're seeing rates that are a little bit higher than you're used to. These rates are tied to the Treasury. The Treasury market right now is inverted yield curve, which means the first year is yielding more than the 10th year, which is the first time in my 42 years in this business that I've seen anything like that. But again, from your standpoint, and we talked a little bit about this, you've been through the budget, your investment earnings are doing pretty well compared to historical levels, so that's a plus for the city side. As Mark said, the real gist of this is that we've cash flowed. And way back when, when we started Garden Circle with the RDA and their direction, we knew it was going to be an expensive project, there was no question about that. Mark and I did every analysis we could and said, okay, I think we can get this done. We'll see what happens in the last five years of this, but we should be able to get it to cash flow, and we have. This particular project has never cost the general taxpayer a penny. And so when you drive by and you look what happened, for those of us who have lived here through that time, it was really a very nice, well-worth project, expensive relative to its potential cash flow, but right now, I think, I'm sure Mark is, and I'm certainly happy to say that we're restructuring this to meet the cash flows, and it will, in fact, cash flow and pay itself out.
Okay? Any questions?
I have one.
Rick?
Can you tell me what that means exactly, to cash flow a project?
Yes, sir, thank you for the question, appreciate that. In terms of, you know, most of the time when we go out and borrow money, we're really interest rate sensitive, we want to hit a market that is the best, the lowest interest rates we can get. What happens with a tax incremental district is that we set aside and identify a certain geographic area, and we capture on its base any growth in the tax rate, the total tax rate, not just the cities, but all the taxing jurisdictions. So we get the gross tax rate on that, and that money goes into a fund to pay for improvements that were done within that small geographic area called a tax incremental district. Now, the important part is, we don't want the general property taxpayer to pay for that. It's different for roads and things like that, which we all use, we expect that to end up on our real estate taxes. For tax incremental districts, it's a tool that the state gave us, started back in 1974, when the original laws were promulgated, and it's been developed over time to allow us to use that as an economic development tool. Unlike other states like ones to the south of us, where you can offer different tax rates, we have uniformity in taxation in our constitution, so we cannot do that. So this was a mechanism that was put in place for us as cities, villages, to actually capture. So now getting back to Rick's question about cash flow, when we go out and borrow money, we have a certain debt service payment. So think of your mortgage, okay? You got a mortgage on your house. Before you went into that mortgage, you said, well, I got a job, you know, I get X number of dollars, I can afford this payment. So part of that money that you generate each year from your job, your income, goes to satisfy that cash requirement. So you have cash flow there, and it's a positive thing, because nobody's going to lend you more on a mortgage than what your total income is, it's only a certain percentage. It's that way with a tax incremental district. We went out, we borrowed money, we did the improvements, we bought the land, as Mark said, we had to raise the buildings, so that was a cost before we could even offer that to a developer, which we did, RDA worked closely with a developer to get that housing done, and of course, we estimated using our assessor what that real value was going to grow to. And then for us, Mark and I, we looked at those value numbers and said, based on our, at the time, the gross tax rate, we had X number of dollars a year to pay debt service. And so we figured it would cash flow, so we would have enough income to make the debt payment.
I, I wonder if it's a simple, cash flow is in both directions. I think what you're getting at is the positive cash flow. When you say cash flow, you mean?
When I, when I mean, when I mean cash flow, I mean, we, yeah, we have enough increment to pay our debts.
Right.
Increment's cash.
Right, well, but there could also be a negative cash flow.
No, we don't have that.
I understand that.
You're right, there also can be a negative.
Exactly, so I think, okay, yeah.
And so going into, Tracy, and going into that project course, we scrutinize those numbers and said, okay, we don't think we're ever going to be in a negative cash flow position.
Correct, correct, okay.
We were doing those projections too, you also think that other areas can be redeveloped at the same time, that would help with increment. Unfortunately, there wasn't any project that happened at that time, and that was part of our issue we run into, that's why we're refinancing right now, too. You know, if the bowling alley would have been done 15 years ago, then this would be a different story.
Would have paid itself off sooner, and we would have canceled out the district.
Alder Wood, did you have?
Yeah, I just, essentially, this would extend the borrowing for two more years, from what we otherwise would. If we didn't extend it, then we would have negative cash flow, so it's, yeah.
Yeah, it's prudent, Doug, to obviously do this. This was a, we had promised that we could do this, that it would, in fact, not have negative cash flow, but it meant that we'd have to restructure and refinance in the future, and here we are, we recognize that. This is not a surprise to me or to Mark, in terms of now we're at the time when we need to restructure.
And the increment will continue to pay.
Of course, yes.
Yeah, I think we knew that from when we started in 2008.
Yes, sir.
That it was going to be tight at the end, so not a surprise.
Smiling a little more now.
It's a good project, though.
Any other questions?
Thank you so much for the questions.
Okay, thank you for the explanation. If there are no other questions, then will the clerk please call, please call the roll?
Alder Morse.
Aye.
Alder Wood.
Aye.
Alder Ramacher.
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you, and thanks for making the trip.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Okay, we will-
We have someone having Thanksgiving.
Yeah, thank you, you too, appreciate it, enjoy.
We will move back up and begin under unfinished business, item 1A, consideration of Resolution 23-11-2650, adopting the 2024 operating budget and establishing a tax levy. Is there a motion to approve this?
Move to approve.
I'll second.
Okay, we have five amendments to consider. That we're all in the packet, and Mr. Hottaker just distributed a replacement for number four, we had an incorrect number, or, yeah, it was number four, right, Mark. So I guess we will move to the, Mark, unless you want to say anything else.
No.
We will start with the First Amendment.
I'll move approval of amendment number one.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, and this is Alder Wood's amendment, Alder Wood, would you like to explain?
Yeah, this would, it's use fund balance of $174,000 instead of the garbage and recycling fee, and we do have enough in fund balance to still be well above our 20% threshold. If we do that, my thinking was, rather than make what is probably a permanent change, if we do the garbage fee for one year, let's apply fund balance, include that in the referendum then, and hopefully we wouldn't need the garbage fee, so.
Any questions? Comments for Alder Wood?
I guess I should just, would add, if this passes, then there wouldn't be any need to do the Second Amendment on the real tax.
So, no questions? Okay. Do we need to have a roll call for this?
Not on amendments.
Okay. I didn't know, because of the amount. If, if there aren't any questions, then all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. So you're withdrawing number two?
Yes. And also number three, which would have, no, wait.
No.
Okay, maybe-
About the interest rate?
Yeah.
I don't think that-
Oh, sorry, I didn't get it.
Oh, okay, good, then I don't need to-
I knew there was a third one, I didn't hear it.
Okay.
Okay, we talked about it last time, but, okay, I'm done.
Okay, then we are withdrawing number two, we'll move on to number three, which is to include $50,000 for the city's strategic plan to be paid out of ARPA funds. Is there a motion to approve this?
Move.
I'll second.
Okay. Neil and I, actually, back when Brian Gatto was here, he and I had started talking about redoing the strategic plan, which I think it's been about 10 years. I know we did it shortly after I came on council in 2012, and we just started exploring it, and then time has gone by, and we haven't pursued it, and we really need to do it. So this is something that we can use ARPA funds for, which, as you know, with our operating budget being so tight, we just don't have the funds available for that right now. So we decided to ask to spend $50,000 from the ARPA funds, we have about $600,000 left in that, we have to make a decision on what to spend that money on by the end of 2024. So, does anybody have any questions? Nancy?
Yeah, or the sake of clarity, is the strategic plan the same as the comprehensive plan?
No.
You're talking about a whole different plan.
Right, right.
And how does the strategic plan dovetail with the comprehensive?
That's, that's going to be a separate item.
I know, but how does it, how does it inform the-
I'm going to let Neil explain.
Yeah, ideally, Alder, what I would envision is that those, basically the strategic values and priorities identified by council would be a driving list for evaluating revisions and changes to the comprehensive plan. So in terms of how much, where how much housing becomes a priority, how much sustainability becomes a priority, how much, whatever values we drive through the strategic plan process here, because obviously the last one being done 10-plus years ago, certainly the environment that council's operating now, post-COVID and so forth, has changed considerably, so we just want to make sure we actually have a current, you know, priority list of, and values of really what the council sees as priorities going into, really not just next year, but for the next several years, and would like to see that list actually become the driving document for not only do you like the comprehensive plan, I would say also for things like the budget, like tonight. Evaluating new requests would actually be tied directly back to priorities identified by the council.
For instance, with the last strategic plan, that's how we ended up deciding to hire a code inspector, because as part of that planning process, we saw a need for that. I think that's also where we found, we learned more about safe walking, pedestrian spaces were a priority for the community, that was something that came out of the strategic plan last time. So that has then informed some of the projects we've done in the meantime. It's, it's on the city website.
No, and I'm sure I've looked at it.
If you wanted to take a look at it, yeah. It's kind of a more of a general overall.
Forgive me, but since this is my, my expertise, you know, I do strategic planning like 80% of my life, in terms of my, in terms of my work. What I'm confused by is that it seems to me, at least the way I do strategic planning, and I think most consultants that I know, strategic plans have very specific goals, measurable goals, right? And, and so it seems a little bit backwards to me, which is to say, it seems like the comprehensive plan being more global and not being measurable, but more of a statement of, with a broad brush, these are the things we want to be dealing with, without measurement, would come before the strategic plan, which would then be a measurable way-
Distill it down, yeah.
To advance that.
Yeah, I guess I would actually view it the exact opposite way, Alder. Without having those values and priorities identified, the comprehensive plan is meant to be more of a policy document, and from any land use types of standpoint, in terms of things like transportation policy, land use policies. And it is, in my view, it is always, it is more of a policy document, while the strategic plan is more, it's more of a higher level, these are the priorities, these are the objectives, and I agree, very measurable, how are we going to be obtaining these sorts of things? And I would think the policies basically involved in the comprehensive plan should directly tie back to those strategic values and priorities established by the council.
Okay.
So they will, they will be merged into one.
Right.
Certain, absolutely.
Okay, well, maybe it's because we haven't actualized at least some of the comprehensive plan that was created 10 years ago, that I'm not necessarily seeing the tie, and that would be certainly a wish, a hope on my, my part, that if they are to be tied together, that the-
Absolutely.
The comprehensive plan have sufficient upkeep, if you will, to see that the strategic plan is measurable, is actualized.
Yeah, and I think I would use, certainly housing is the example, there's going to have policies across multiple different areas of city policy, from zoning to parking, you know, things like parking lot size, things like how does it relating to transit, things in housing, to, so by establishing a strategic goal of improving housing, affordable housing, whatever council decides, that should be a driving factor when we start looking at all those nine elements in that comprehensive plan, and then saying, hey, we're recommending this change or this policy, and that ties directly back to this strategic goal that the council's established.
Understood, but actually I'll use housing as an example, which is to say that our current comprehensive plan talks about affordable housing, and also talks about the missing middle and fulfilling the needs of missing middle through things like diversifying housing stock and, you know, pocket neighborhoods and that sort of, and, you know, looking at things like duplexes or, or, you know, townhomes, and to the best of my knowledge, since that plan was done, there's been one small subdivision and one townhome. And so that, when I say, I feel like a lot of, not to mention the, our needs around affordable housing, which we're all very aware of. So I, I guess I'm just saying, I'm not seeing the two as tied together perhaps, you know, as much as they might be, and would encourage, understand the need for both, I just would encourage us to make sure that those documents are tied together in a way that, that we, and that we actualize it as council, and as a city.
I think one of the key areas is probably, again, certainly being the new guy, is that there have not been significant efforts to measure the implementation of that comprehensive plan over time.
Mm-hmm.
I think it's, and that certainly would be something we would hope to be addressing through, I would say, both of these updates.
Right. And actually, last time, we did approve the comp plan after the strategic plan, it came on earlier, so, okay. Anyone else?
Where are we on comp planning? I'm just curious, and it's due by 2026, right?
Right.
That's correct. We're going to be taking the initial look as we're going to be reviewing the housing element specifically, pretty much in light of some of the new mandates or at least opportunities, I guess I should say, that have come down through the state, through Wisconsin Housing Economic Development Authority, making some, at least, some immediate changes to that probably in the next year, so we can qualify for different funding programs and so forth there. So that is, we are going to take a first shot at kind of updating that, but there will still, we will still be needing to do a full program on, on the overall comprehensive plan update, because even, even by focusing on the housing, we're still going to be, you know, kind of touching on things like parking, which is obviously starting to come into transportation. So we're going to be starting it by with picking the housing element as the first initial one to review, but I would say in pretty short order, we're going to need to be taking a look at the rest of the other elements in the comprehensive plan.
And the comprehensive plan is a much more involved process than the strategic plan.
Thank you.
So this money would fund a consultant to work on the strategic plan, which is what we've done in the past. Doug?
My questions focus more on the ARPA fund side of it. Well, one, you said, I think, that it has, well, what do we have to do by the end of 2024? Does it have to be, it's not enough that it's in a budget, I don't believe, but it has to be, you have to have a contract or encumbered in a way?
Director Hutter says the funds need to be encumbered, which in my understanding has generally been like actually under contract, so there's actually a legal commitment of funds, not just, not just a budgeted amount, obviously, council knows you can budget for something but not spend that money, but actually having the money encumbered, so it's actually under contract with, with either a consultant or whatever process we're going to engage in where we actually, have actually, we are legally obligated then to spend the money.
We do not have to spend the money by the end of 2024, though.
Correct.
Correct.
Okay, and we have about $600,000 in the balance right now, so this would take 60 out of that. And I know this is not a simple question, it's not a simple answer, I don't think, to this, but could you just talk about how it's, this is eligible for ARPA funds?
Yeah, absolutely, I mean, there's obviously multiple avenues on, on how it can, we don't want to make a specific effort, in my opinion, to certainly be doing things, in most, in most ARPA funding projects, how it's tied specifically back to the low-to-moderate income persons, should be a significant part of this planning, or part of the planning effort, how to improve, and either actually facilitate recovery or position additional resiliency against things like the pandemic.
Okay.
So, whether it's economic recovery, that would be needed, so by having a majority of these plans updated and reflected on what sort of areas we want to be able to be more resilient in, will certainly be another avenue of focus, I think we want to take a look at. Those two, I think, would be the primary areas, I think, that we would qualify for.
Mark, did you have anything to add?
No, I mean, it's, yeah, a lot of it is DEI stuff, that's going to be, and things like that.
Which means what we've paid for NEMI, some of this in the past, I think.
And what's the deadline for the ARPA funds? They have to be-
We have to decide how we're going to use it. Do we actually have to have it all under contract?
Yeah, by the next year.
By the end of, by the end of '24, right?
Yeah, next year.
And then we have to, it doesn't have to be all spent, though, until, is it '25 or '26?
I'd have to take a look, but if you prove this, it's, you'll be close to that. Assume this would happen all next year.
Oh, yeah, this won't be a problem.
Yeah.
Just in general, though?
Yeah, yeah.
Do we know, it's at least '25 that we still have to spend the money.
But the obligation requirement by the end of this, next year, is something we need to keep an eye on.
Yes, oh, yeah.
In terms of making sure we use all the money.
Absolutely.
Yep. Any other questions? Nancy?
Yeah, as it relates, again, to the, to the ARPA funding, in the interest of not nickel-and-diming our way down to zero, and with commitments in '24, might there be, and then conceivably having something come up that really fits well, but we've just spent the $600,000, might we envision as a staff or as a city, what other things over the next year would be applicable to ARPA, would be, you know, applicable to ARPA funding, so that we could sort of get a full, a more sense of the scope of where we're headed with those funds?
And we have talked about that, I think, one thing I am concerned about, we've tried to be judicious in how we spend the money, we've only spent, what, $200,000 or $250,000?
Right, a lot of it was because we were baking at the administrative position, too.
Pardon?
We didn't do much when I was in there, because we were baking at that position, so, so we have, we didn't have a good plan.
Right, so, but I would, I'd really like to hang on to a fair amount of it until how we know how this referendum is going to come out.
Sure.
Next year.
Sure.
So that will be in November. Obviously, that leaves us not a whole lot of time, but if that operating referendum fails, then I think we're going to need to use some of that money, hopefully, to get us through some things in 2025.
Sure.
And it's not going to be that much, but, so that's why I don't want to obligate all of it right now or make a final decision, you know.
Oh, not to just, we allocate it, I just, I would like to know, you know.
And we're certainly well aware of that, yeah.
Yeah.
And I've been, I mean, we've been talking about it for several months now, yeah, so. So some of it we're not going to know for quite a while, but I think we'll also have a good idea, either or, depending on the results of the referendum, and even, I mean, obviously, that won't be a permanent solution either, but, Neil?
And I think we're probably, at least staff is probably planning on, is having almost kind of a, a budget A and budget B, as we come into November. Obviously, if we proceed, if the referendum passes, we will have the direction we need to proceed. If we don't, it's going to be certainly a difficult budget that will probably involve significant, could potentially involve significant reductions in services or cuts to make that go. So we will kind of have both of those, those tracks kind of established, and we'll be working with council on those as we go into the budget, so it'll be-
I understand that, as it relates to operating referendum, and as it relates to, to the use of the ARPA funds for one thing or the other, but assuming the best-case scenario, which is that the referendum passes, would you spend the remaining $500,000 on, since we have to have it encumbered by the end of '24?
And it'll be less than $500,000 at that point.
Or, right, or $4,000, whatever the number is, I'm just trying to get a sense of, of the priorities en masse, as opposed to $50,000 here, $40,000 there, you know.
I think we're very fortunate we've had this funding.
Yeah, completely agree.
It has enabled us to do some of these things that we-
I'm sure every municipality in the country feels the same way.
Badly to do, yeah. Doug?
I would just say, though, whether the referendum passes or not, we want to spend all the ARPA money.
Exactly.
But completely agree.
And, but I think it's a great idea to start, and I'm sure you guys have already done some of this, of identifying things. I know we have identified some to use them, so, yeah.
Yep, and that's definitely something we've been talking about. Anything else about this particular amendment? All in favor, say aye.
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 opposed? Motion passes, thank you. Next amendment four, and there's a new version of this, we had, just had a typo in it, to include $60,000 for the city's housing element of the, to update the city's, is actually what this would be, this, the city's housing element of the comprehensive plan, also to be paid out of the ARPA funds. This is something that, as I think most of you know, we need to, the state legislature passed a couple of bills affecting affordable housing at the end of their session in June, and in order for us to qualify for some of those loans, or some of those funds, we need to make some changes in our ordinances and in our comprehensive plan. So this would fund a consultant to help with the housing element of that plan. Hopefully, that'd be something we'd be getting going on sooner rather than later, because the sooner we can see what we can do in terms of applying for some of those funds, the better to help with new developments, so. Is there a motion? I'm sorry, I didn't.
I'll move approval.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Any questions or thoughts? Nancy?
I don't have any questions, but I, I just, and obviously, I probably am aware more than most here of the need to be moving on housing elements. I guess I would just say that as Chair of the Plan Commission, I'm sorry that I didn't hear about this before the, before this evening, before the things were distributed.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
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 opposed? Motion passes. And finally, this is put forth by Alda Bernstein, item five, to include $12,000 for the library's strategic plan to be paid out of the ARPA funds. This is put forth by Alda Bernstein. Is there a motion to approve this?
I'll move approval.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
This was a case where the library director had originally, or library board had originally requested this as part of the capital plan, that it would be, and this is not a suitable item for capital borrowing, so we told them that if they wanted to do it, they should use fund balance, because in the past, they've had quite a substantial fund balance, and apparently, there's not enough money in the fund balance, so, as you know, this discussion came up at the end of the last council meeting about including, taking some of the money out of the ARPA funds to pay for it. So Rick, did you have anything?
Well, yeah, first of all, I just want to thank Doug for suggesting that we look into ARPA funds and whoever was involved in making that evaluation, I appreciate your efforts. I just think that it was important for the library at this stage, it just completed a five-year scope of its current plan, and it was time to do something new, and that events have been so dramatic in the past few years with COVID, the George Floyd incident, it's really time for the library to take a fresh look at how to serve its community. I think it will be in the center of whatever our DEIB efforts will be or should be, and it's really important that, it's kind of a tired cliche, but failing to plan means planning to fail. And so I think it's a rather modest sum for the library to really take a fresh look at how they operate, and I hope you can support this amendment.
Any questions? Brian?
Mark, can you speak to fund balance of what currently exists? And I think, I think you may have shared some of this earlier, but not everybody regarding what are pre-strategic plan costs of the library, and it's paid off the capital from fund balance.
From their fund balance or ours?
Their fund balance.
They have their own fund balance.
And so I'm curious why we're not using fund balance again.
I mean, it was in the past, the last time it was done, it was done, same situation. It wasn't a capital item, it was an operating item, so the library decided to use their own fund balance to pay for this. I think their fund balance is 10% is their policy, and I think they're close to that number.
And they want to keep that, 10% of their regular budget.
But there's no, like, with that, there's no, like, the debt service, like, the city's fund balance has an effect on their borrowing. Like, when I go, we go for borrowing, state or S and P, they'll take a look at that. They don't look at the library one, so it's not like a consequence of whatever that time, like there is for, but generally, if that happens, just to distinguish between the two of that. So, yeah, it has been paid over the last, I can't remember if it was, I think I gave you the number, I don't remember what it was, it was $7,000 or something like that?
The library director, Ryan, is on.
Yeah, seven to eight thousand, I remember, seven to nine, I don't remember the exact number. That was done back.
It was done four or five years ago, wasn't it?
Yeah, it's probably been about six. Seems like 2018 or something, so five years ago.
Can Ryan speak to that? He might have the exact number.
Okay.
Ryan, do you remember how much you paid for the last strategic plan?
I apologize, I don't have the exact number. I want to say it was around $10,000. It was about five years ago.
Close to that.
And your fund balance, is that that 10% currently?
Yeah, so per the, the fund balance policy, the library has, the fund balance is, the goal for the library fund balance is 10% of the operating budget, and I believe that's where we are at heading into the end of the year. And we won't know the true balance until probably like late January. When we used fund balance dollars about around five years ago for the strategic plan, I think at that point, we probably had around $120, $125,000 in the fund balance.
Mark, do you know how much they have right now? I think you'd like to keep somewhere between 90 and 100, is that right, Ryan?
Yeah, so, I mean, 10% with our operating budget, you know, if, let me strip me, we're around the $900,000 mark for operating budget, so we want to keep around 90,000. Last I checked, I want to say we were at like 93. Again, the, the fund balance is kind of, not to say it's necessarily a moving target, but I won't know what the true balance is until the end of the 2023 operating budget year.
So can I just, so it's, in summary, it just sounds like the library currently does not have enough of a fund balance to, to cover the $12,000 strategic plan, hence they're asking that it be covered with ARPA funds.
Right, Mark, did you?
Their fund balance is $99,000.
$99,000. And Ryan, I think I saw something in your packet for this week's meeting that you're going to be spending $7,000 on something else from the fund balance?
Yes. Yeah, and there was another item earlier on, well, I guess that would have been covered in Mark's report of certain dollars. Again, though, I, yeah, so the, so that would put us at $92,000. And then, I guess I keep referencing the end of the year, my understanding is, it just depends at where we're at with our operating budget, whether we go below or we have some remaining that goes back into the fund balance.
I assume you'll have some savings since at least one of the librarians has left, right, for a while, anyway?
Yeah.
We are on track for that, knock on wood. I'm always hoping that, I mean, the goal, of course, is to spend and get our budget down to $0 right on the mark, but we probably, where we're at now, I guess I'm forecasting around maybe $1,000, $2,000 that will go into the fund balance. Again, you know, depending on what happens, we also are currently looking at replacing our fireplace and other things that are unexpected.
So, yeah, so basically, $99,000, it's beginning of the year, so they don't, fund balance is adjusted once a year, it's basically, it's basically like you retain earnings, your net income, it just rolls for your bank balance. They did spend $9,000 this year out of their fund balance. They did a DEI. They had somebody come, outside services for DEI, somebody came in, did a presentation, did some work with the library, and that was $9,000. But they are on track to be, if I remember, because I was just looking at, basically break even. So they'll probably end up around the $99,000, give or take, $1,000 here or there, one way or the other, and then all that all sorts out. But they'll be close to breaking even.
What was the additional $7,000?
That's for some kind of a program, isn't it, Ryan? The additional $7,000 that's just being proposed to the library board? I can't remember exactly what it was.
So, yeah, so that's unincluding mine, so, yeah.
So I guess there is money for that.
So, yeah, hang on, I'd like to hear more about what the seven is going to be proposed for.
I believe it was for core strengths of program, correct, Brian?
Yeah, so that funding that I'm proposing to the board, which has not been approved yet, that's up for approval tomorrow, that's to be moved, that's to be used for staff training, and that is like a platform that all staff takes, evaluates all of their strengths, and then a trainer is brought in to help the staff look at those strengths, not only to how they service, use those strengths towards the community, but especially like within the library, how the staff can work one, work with one another, which is one of our priorities currently.
Is that the thing we did with Sidman, basically, just different?
No, that one was a separate one. This, the platform that, that funding that we're discussing would go towards is actually one that Alda Bernstein and I were, were shown as part of the embracing equity leadership summit that we currently are doing.
Which is out of the current funding for the DEBI money?
Yeah, yeah, embracing equity is the program Mark was talking about.
That's out of their library fund balance.
What?
That's all library fund balance.
Yeah.
Is that always your question was?
Yeah.
The original $9,000.
That was the $9,000, and then we'll pose in another $7,000 training.
One of the recommendations out of the embracing equity program was to have this computer software that'll help the staff work better with each other.
All software?
Yeah.
So they've apparently, they've decided to use what fund balance they have for that. Nancy?
Well, it sounds like Ryan just said they haven't approved it yet, so they haven't decided.
Right, they're, they're looking at it tomorrow night.
Right. I guess, you know, I've, I think I've spoken to this before, but I, well, first of all, let me say that I completely applaud all of the efforts that the library has made around DEIB. There's a question that, you know, that they've provided leadership in that regard, and, you know, if you look at the programming and everything that they've done, I really applaud that. On the other hand, I am concerned that various departments seem to operate a bit in silos in terms of, you know, deciding that their area should avail themselves of special software or special team building or special embracing of equity when it's, it's really something that frankly, I think every department in the city could probably utilize and, and take it, you know, and, and learn from. And so, I mean, personally, I'd rather see the library spend money on its strategic plan and, and the ARPA money be spent on putting together a full program for the whole city staff or the, you know, instead, because it just seems, you know, to have one department doing its own thing and not have other departments.
Well, frankly, the first I heard of this was looking at the packet, their packet yesterday.
Oh, no, I understand.
Yeah, we weren't aware of any of this. But the library, as you know, is governed under special statutes in terms of their budget and.
Right.
Yeah. But I get your point.
I'm just saying, in terms of, in terms of our priorities, I.
Of ARPA funds.
And, and our, and ARPA funds, I would rather see ARPA funds applied to something that, I mean, I completely applaud initiatives in DEIB. And I'd rather see the ARPA funds spent for everyone in the city staff to be able to avail themselves of what they need to, to raise the bar there than to just have this library doing its own thing, and then us paying for their strategic plan as a result.
Can we, could we finalize a vote on this next time we meet and not, not close the door on this tonight? It sounds like maybe there's some more conversation or discussion.
We certainly don't have to vote on this tonight.
Right.
Well, yes and no.
Yes and no. I mean, this amendment could, the amendment could be turned down.
Have we tabled the amendment at all?
No.
No?
You're voting on the budget tonight, so you want to vote on that, which is like bringing back as a different item throughout the year.
Yeah.
Because if it's, if it's ARPA, it's sort of outside of the budget, right?
Right.
So if you want, yeah, have a comeback with the amendment later in the year, that's what I would do. So you still have to vote, just.
I mean, we'll be making decisions on ARPA going forward.
I mean, as part of a strategic planning process for the city of Monona, every one of us would, would want a strong and thriving library, and to give it what it needs, obviously. Nobody's here speaking in opposition to that.
Well, I guess I'll just say that, you know, like Mayor mentioned, the library is a separately constituted facility. It's, it's not quote unquote a department like all the others within the city.
But it does rely on city funds.
Correct, but.
Once you have the funds, you can use it as you like.
Nancy's point that it's doing a separate process in terms of planning, in terms of equity.
Yeah.
I'd be, you know, if, if the whole city was moving forward with some kind of particular program with DIB, I think the library would be more than willing to jump in, but because it is a separate institution, it has its own board, separate from the council that makes decisions for the library. They were eager to start in on, on DEIB. And to their credit, you know, there were some incidents that happened in the library where this happened to be very helpful for them to get an outside look at how to handle those incidents in the library. So it's not too late to really, it is getting a little late to really get on the ball with embracing equity or, or moving on that. I think it's taken us a long time to get off the ball on that. Not that we haven't been doing good planning, but Monona has a long way to go before it's a diverse community, and I think any effort in that regard should be avoided.
I guess how does this particular plan affect diversity?
Well, I think the plan, I, I think diversity will be a major issue within the strategic plan. I think the library will be a hub of diversity-based training and education.
I'm sorry, I thought you were talking about the $7,000 plan being a, something related to the city.
No, I wasn't addressing that at all. I was addressing the $12,000 budget amendment. And I do think it's a rather small, modest amount, and I do think we want our library to be a flagship part of the, of the city in terms of taking on DEIB. I think that is going to be where we should put a lot of our time and effort.
Yeah, I, I agree. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Well, I was just going to say, I completely agree, which is exactly why I started my comment by saying I applaud the fact that the library has taken leadership on this issue.
Right.
All I'm saying is that the library shouldn't be the only one that's working on the issue and that.
But I don't think we should. But I don't think we should pull the library back, I think the rest of the city should work to catch up.
We're kind of talking about two different things at the same time here.
Yeah, yeah.
I, I will mention that.
Yeah, let's clarify the two different things.
Right now, what's on the table is something about the, the ARPA funds funding the library's strategic plan.
Right.
That's right.
So.
Right. And, and my, my discussion about DEIB goes through that strategic plan. I think that's going to be a major component of what the strategic plan addresses.
Right, and I'm not at all suggesting the library shouldn't have a new strategic plan, I'm just talking about the funding, which is to say, again, that maybe the library should pay for its own strategic plan, because it is important out of its fund balance, and then the seven thousand dollars that the library's thinking about spending for this other, for this other DEIB initiative would be something that would be effectively blown up into a larger initiative for the entire city and, and applied, with ARPA funds applied.
Which we'd have to do some research.
Right.
Right. Alder Wood?
Yeah, so I just wanted to go back to something Mark said about their, the ten percent line that they have for their fund balance is not like the bright red line that we have on the twenty percent for the city, because that, the twenty percent for the city fund balance affects, as Mark said, the people who rate our bonds, they, they look at that, they don't look at the library fund balance, so it's really very different. My understanding over the years is that kind of held that ten percent in case you had a really big project, which, like when they, we redid the stairs five or ten years ago, that, we used fund balance for a lot of that, and took the fun, took the fund balance way down below the ten percent. So I, you know, I think if they're, if they fall a little bit below ten percent in order to fund this and the other things that they're funded, that would be okay, in my opinion, but that's up to the library board to how to, how to spend it.
I, I will say, if I can, in answer to that, is that the library had a much better fund balance, but the city had requested that they spend it down.
Well, the library had like a hundred and sixty-five dollars, a thousand dollars in fund balance, and their policy was ninety, so that's an awful lot of money for the, to keep coming to the city asking for funds for things when you had all that money, which was city money, really, I mean, the library board obviously makes decisions about it, but it's taxpayer money that it came from, so, you know, we ask other departments to pay from, you know, if some of them, a few of them have had, I know the senior center, we've asked them to pay for a couple of things out of their fund balance too, rather than the city borrowing for them or whatever. So yeah, it's. Anyone else? Okay, well, I guess we'll call the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Yeah, I'm going to say aye.
Opposed.
Nay.
Motion fails. Okay, now we are back to.
Which I just could add before we leave, so the library board could still choose to fund that.
Right.
Or, you know, could bring it back as a separate standalone use of ARPA funds.
Get some money later.
Right.
Thank you.
And the city could also look into seeing what this other seven thousand dollar program would entail for all of the city staff, and paying for that in the London Library, just paying for the other, for the strategic plan out of their own fund balance.
Good to know, thank you.
Okay, so now we are back to our initial, our original motion, which has been amendment, amended, so I guess the question is all in favor of approving the budget as amended?
Roll call.
Correct, and we're going to roll call for that. So the court, please call the roll.
Alder Moore.
Aye.
Alder Wood.
Aye.
Alder Rodmacher.
Aye.
Alder Bernstein.
Aye.
Alder Homquist.
Aye. Motion passes and we finally are done with the budget pieces. Great, thank you all, and thank you, Mark, in particular, for all the time you put in on this.
If I could just quick comment on that, I would also thank Leah Kimmon for all of her work as well. Both, both her and Mark have done a banner amount of work, I felt like I was just kind of on the sidelines because they were taking such good care of it most of this time, so yeah, I was, I was informed in my interview process that we were in good hands, and I can verify that is, that is definitely still the case, so thank you to both of them specifically, really, for all their work, so.
Very true. All right, moving on, to item one B, consideration of resolution twenty-three dash eleven dash twenty-six forty-six, approval of a three-year proposal from Barnes Incorporated for brush collection services, and this is put forth by the Public Works Committee, we did have an initial introduction about it last time, is there a motion to approve this? No approval.
Second.
Dan.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't have any updates to the first reading, I haven't received any additional questions in the last two weeks. Again, this is a three-year contract for twenty-four, twenty-five, and twenty-six for curb site brush collection, and some landscaping beds on Manona Drive and at City Hall, and also the Christmas tree collection program for the three years. We have pricing here if we need additional help for any storm damage throughout the city, other than that, it's, it's all pretty straightforward in the proposal.
Before the beds along Manona Drive, these aren't all the beds along Manona Drive?
No.
So do you do those under a separate contract?
We, we have some volunteers that maintain a few of the other ones, property owners maintain what's on their, on their corner property, the ones that we have identified here in the past, they haven't been taken care of, so these are the ones that, that staff has taken care of.
Okay, so the one on Manona and Dean, where the Bloom project is going in, who takes care of that one?
That's not part of this one, I, I'm not sure what the extent of that landscaping bed is, but it's, it's, it's not covered under this program.
Okay, well, maybe I'll ask you separately.
My guess is if, if that's part of the new development, the developer will probably take care of that with their, the rest of their landscaping.
Okay, good to know, thank you.
That's my spec, I can't guarantee that, but my assumption is they're going to do that because they're not going to maintain the rest of the property and leave that, that corner sign unattended, so.
Maybe Doug, when he talks, can address that.
Anyone else have any other questions? Okay, if there aren't any more with the court, please call the roll.
Alder Wood.
Aye.
Alder Rodmacher.
Aye.
Alder Bernstein.
Aye.
Alder Homquist.
Aye.
Alder Moore.
Aye. Motion is approved, thank you, Dan. All right, now we are going to move on to the two items related to the Bloom. First, item one C, consideration of resolution twenty-three dash eleven dash twenty-six forty-eight, approval of a certified survey map, CSM for lot combination, creating one new lot, the Bloom GDP, this is put forth by the Plan Commission, is there a motion to approve this? No approval.
Second.
Doug.
Thank you, good evening, everybody, I, I won't really go into too much detail, but just very high level, this is the, the lot combination associated with the Bloom general development plan, this will consolidate all of the existing lots on that block between West Dean, Gordon, Manona Drive, and Spring Haven, consolidate those into one to assist with the development of the ninety-eight unit development that will be considered later. This was recommended by the Plan Commission on October twenty-third, as well as Public Works Committee on November first, and we're joined by the applicant and their legal representative this evening, I believe we also have one of the engineers on the Zoom call as well with their own questions.
Questions, anyone?
Do you know anything about the monument bed there?
I would have to double check the, the landscaping plan specifically, it'd be on my computer, but I don't have it in front of me, but they, and I can potentially turn it over, but certainly the, the signage, and that's, that corner was definitely discussed a lot during, during the review process of Plan Commission, and is something that's been incorporated into the design, so I can't speak specifically to landscaping, but I would imagine, I would expect that, you know, given how much they've incorporated the side, I would imagine that that would be taken care of as well.
Okay. I'll check with you later.
Any other questions?
Yeah.
Related to the CSM, is that okay?
Planner Plomin, I, I just recall when I was reviewing the packet that there was a recommendation from Public Works that, and I might be confusing this with the next item on the agenda, it's this or the next, that there be a very clear, clear explanation of who is responsible for maintenance of the street, whether it's the city or the property owner, I thought that there was like a recommendation that there was a requested change be made to the documents, and as I was looking through, I wasn't sure if I saw it or not, do you know if that, have you gotten what you needed?
Is that in the CSM, or is that?
So that's going to be part of the CSM, so, or sort of associated with the legal recording of land and things, so there are certainly some easements to take care of, the new sidewalks going in on private property, as well as the, the agreement in place for the parking along Spring Haven, so I would say they're all sort of bundled together. The Public Works Committee, as well as the Plan Commission, were both very concerned at making sure that they remained, and really, that's sort of with the city attorney and with the development, but certainly, they're aware of that, and that was something Public Works Director was very keen to make sure of as well, so maintenance and sort of access and maintenance are very key as part of this.
But, but you're satisfied with where that's at?
Yes.
Okay, that's all, okay.
Would you like to address?
I'll just pop in quick and help Doug here, so I've actually talked to Bill Cole about the various easements, and there's some terminations and stuff, and I actually have a set of drafts, so I'm going to get out to him hopefully before Thanksgiving, maybe after, but we have connected about all the various documents that would be companions to the CSM and the things shown on there.
Yeah, I mean, it's passed through, through committee, I'm sure that, you know, I just, it was just that one thing that stuck in my mind, and I just wanted to make sure that you had gotten what you needed, so, thanks.
All right, thank you. Any other questions for Doug? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, motion is approved, thank you. Next item, consider, item D, consideration of resolution twenty-three dash eleven dash twenty-six forty-nine, approving the Plan Commission recommendation for the Bloom PIP, also put forth by the Plan Commission, is there a motion to approve this?
Move approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Doug.
Thank you. So this is the, the second read of the precise implementation plan for the Bloom development, same address, the forty-six oh one to forty-six thirteen Manona Drive. As a, as a reminder, the precise implementation plan is the sort of detailed documentation that goes along with the general development plan, the GDP for the, the development was approved by City Council in late twenty-twenty-two, December fifth of twenty-twenty-two. The PIP was reviewed and has certainly evolved since the first GDP came through, but this now includes a ninety-eight unit four-story apartment building with about seventy-five hundred square feet of commercial space, all facing and fronting Manona Drive, that will include the BMO Harris Bank, a business incubator, as well as some tenant amenity space, cafe, fitness center, dog run, club room, within, within the development. The PIP had two hearings at the Plan Commission, and the formal consideration was at the October twenty-third meeting, where it was unanimously recommended to City Council for approval, with two findings effect and eighteen conditions of approval included in the memo, and again, we're joined by representatives from the, from the project team, happy to answer any questions.
As well as the attorney, so if anyone has any questions. Anyone?
Oh, it looks like a beautiful building, it really does.
I think we are all very happy to make this point, aren't we?
Yeah, I still get a little nervous when I see that ATM, like, I don't know, I just hope there's a lot of lights and safety features around it, but yeah.
It sounded like they've taken that into account.
Yeah, it looks great.
So is this, are we, is this the last approval?
Yeah, it is.
How is that possible? It seems like we should, like, can the party go, just keep this party going on forever, right? Yeah, yeah, I mean, thirty percent green space, there's just a lot of really lovely things about this, that'll, and the, the new, the new Gordon Avenue, you know, with all those, the, the, the work along Gordon Avenue with all those trees, I just think it's going to be such a nice addition to that neighborhood.
If there aren't any other questions, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed. Motion is approved, thank you. Thank everyone involved with this for the last three years, for, it's, it's good feeling.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to new business, we've taken care of item two A, item two B, consideration of resolution twenty-three dash eleven dash twenty-six fifty-two, approval of participation in the Wisconsin Bureau of Transportation Safety Grant titled Twenty-Twenty-Four Capital Area OWI Task Force, this is put forth by the police chief, and it is started for immediate approvals, is there a motion to take this out of order? Take it out of order?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Is there a motion to approve? Move approval.
Second.
Okay, chief.
Good evening, council, thank you for taking it out of order, we're up against a little bit of a timeline, unexpected, mine, I'll own it, the state and the county, they're, they're doing a, a campaign for both of these grants in December, strategically designed to work together, and so we're part of a, a greater task force, a multi-agency group, Manona PD, actually Lieutenant Wiegel is the administrator of this grant, so we need to get this going, so it's, it goes before Public Safety Committee on Wednesday, so our timing's a little bit off, but I, I hope that I'd be able to answer any questions you might have about both of these grants that are before you. So the first one is for OWI enforcement, the funding is less than what we've received in prior years, in previous years, we typically are up to ten thousand dollars, we haven't used that money last year, so the state has given the task force less, and so our cut of it is ten thousand, this year, it's seventy-five hundred, based on our usage of, of the funding. A lot of that has to do with availability, and, you know, we had a lot of sort of mandated overtime that the officers had to work, and I don't order folks to work these traffic grants, we typically, it's, it's volunteer and seniority-based per contract.
We were down one officer, right?
And we were, yes, yes, that too, we were doing a lot of backfills.
So any questions, you see the same one that, yeah, you see every year, this is the next one.
And our, our share of it is the overtime cost, or match?
Yeah, so our match is the twenty-five percent of the, the overtime costs, so what we typically do is we cover that by, with straight time, with on-duty time, not overtime.
Anyone have any questions?
Nancy? I don't have a question, but I, I just want to, for those people that are new or to the council, my understanding is, is with both of these safety grants, both with the seatbelts and with OWI, the intent here is not to be busting people, but to actually use the grants to curb behavior, they're wide, the fact that they're, they're operating with these grants is why, is widely publicized, I mean, the idea is to, to give people a heads up at a time, right?
One hundred percent, we're, we're asking for compliance, we're trying to save lives, y'all, everyone is concerned about life and safety, and so that's the goal here, so we're asking people to, in this, for this agenda item, drive sober, sober, or get pulled over, you've probably heard that, and this is part of that campaign as well.
So how, how do you effectuate this? How do you, use extra drive time at night, or what is it, how is it targeted?
Yeah, so when we, how the state sort of directs us to implement these, these grants is we have to work with the other agencies with respect to the area of enforcement, be it the Highway twelve, eighteen, or major thoroughfare, for example, and the time and day, so we're all coinciding and working together, all agencies, to work, to address, for example, OWI, we might pick a Friday night from eleven to three, every agency would, would have an officer dedicated for OWI enforcement during that timeframe, and so it's just a lot of coordination between the agencies, and Kurt, Lieutenant Wiegel, does all of that on the front half, which is why it's important, again, for us to, please get this started so that we can do all that coordination and get, get dates locked in.
And do you have a sense of the results in the past?
We, we do. We do. I don't have any numbers for you here today, but we report those to the state. And so the state typically, and this year we're going to do it with the county, where we report those directly to Safe Communities, who helps facilitate a lot of the traffic safety in our community. I pointed at you, Doug, because, or Alder Wood, because I figure you're quite familiar with the Traffic Safety Commission. But we'll report those directly to them this time, so they don't have to wait for the state to give report outs, and hopefully we'll, they'll do some work in publicizing that to the county communities.
And do you share that with us, with the Alders?
I absolutely can, yeah.
I would like it, yeah.
Any other questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Next item, also started for immediate approval. Consideration of resolution twenty-three dash eleven dash twenty-six fifty-three. Approval of participation in the Wisconsin Bureau of Transportation Safety Grant titled Twenty Twenty Four Dane Suburban Seatbelt Task Force, also put forth by the chief. Is there a motion to take this out of order?
Move to take this out of order?
I'll second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Is there a motion to approve?
I'll move approval.
Second.
Chief?
We're getting all of ten thousand this year. That was, that's been pretty much what we've seen in years past, with, again, we have a cost-sharing match in which we have to contribute to that. Seatbelts save lives, as we all know, that's a priority for the state DOT, but also for us. While I will say though, is that I very much agree that, you know, we need to do a better job of stepping up and educating and informing the public the importance of wearing your seatbelt. To some, it's second nature, to others, it might not be. And there's a variety of factors as to why that is the case or isn't the case. What I will say though, is that while officers are out and about doing enforcement under this grant, our prime, my directive to them, as approved by the state, who I met with my first year here, is to address hazardous driving behavior. So we're going after the reckless driving and the speeding, keeping in mind that we can pull over for seatbelt violations as a primary offense. However, I want the officers to certainly focus on the hazardous driving. Both kill many people in our community for not wearing your seatbelt or for driving hazardous, and so this is sort of a two-stop shop, so to speak. So we will be addressing seatbelts, however, as I've reassured other council and sort of how I go into traffic enforcement, I'm looking for the dangerous driving.
Anybody have any questions for the chief? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is approved, thank you. All right, on the next and final item, D, convene in closed session under Wisconsin Statute, section nineteen point eight-five, print one, print E, deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, the investing in public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require closed session. This is regarding the firefighters' local three-eleven and Wisconsin Professional Police Association bargaining. Is there a motion to go into closed session?
I'll move.
I'll second.
I don't.
Would you please follow the roll?
Alder Radamacher?
Aye.
Alder Bernstein?
Aye.
Alder Holmquist?
Aye.
Alder Moore?
Aye.
Alder Wood?
Aye.
We are in closed session. Good night, Mark, have a nice Thanksgiving.
Thank you, Mark. Happy Thanksgiving.
Okay, we will move on to reports of committees, et cetera. Are there any updates on DEI efforts?
Teresa? I've got something. I guess I just wanted to make a general statement. I think all of us were pretty disgusted to see the news that a bunch of Nazi protesters marched in Madison, and I can't, I cannot express strongly enough my disgust with that behavior. And I think it's, it's just sickening and cowardly. And I thought it was interesting that they wore black masks, because, I don't know, maybe if the photograph is blurred enough, it might kind of seem like a bunch of people of color. I don't know. But in Menona, we have an official statement on diversity, equity, inclusion, and belonging, and we are committed to welcoming all people regardless of their race, age, sexual orientation, gender identity, or ability. And I think I can speak for all of my colleagues about how strongly we disagree with the behavior of that small group. The second thing I was just going to mention is that Alder Bernstein and I, by way of an interesting conversation, sort of ran across an interesting organization. We decided to hop on, hop in a little training tomorrow. I'll let Rick, I won't steal all of your thunder. It's called the Government Alliance on Race and Equity, and it's an organization that sort of works with local governments to operationalize DEIB plans and put them into action. And it just seemed like such a smooth fit into the work that we're doing on the DEIB implementation team. And it was just by happenstance, and Rick just logged onto their website, and he's like, there's an informational session tomorrow at noon, and I go, let's sign up.
Is this based in Wisconsin, or where is it?
It's a national, national organization. So I reached out to Karen and Harry, and they had both heard of it, and I said, it's a great organization. Madison's worked with them, so anyway, see what tricks we can pick up. And I'll leave the rest of DEIB for committee report.
Does anyone else have anything to report? Anyone have anything on sustainability?
Yeah, I'd have something in general, but again, I think I'm going to steal Rick's thunder here a little bit.
No, this is.
Rick, I reached out to the sustain, you know, in the spirit of always trying to like, you know, make sure that we're doing whatever we can do, and are we on the right path and all that stuff? I reached out to the Sustainability Director in Middleton. Rick and I went and had coffee with that person on Sunday morning, and, you know, it was just a great conversation, picked up a lot of really interesting stuff. Something that she was referring to is just how, with all the legislation, the federal legislation that is now part of our world, you know, she's, she has brought in over two million dollars in grants, just because she knows how to write grants, you know? She's really paying for her position. She's currently managing three million dollars worth in projects. We talked a little bit about, you know, the stuff that their Green Team, not Green Team, their Sustainability Committee is working on, similar to us, they're still doing a lot of project-based work, seasonal stuff, but they're also working on some bigger things, which, you know, again, sort of moved the needle to operationalize sustainability throughout all the departments. It was just a really, a really eye-opening conversation, and it sounds like she's, she and all the sustainability folks from all surrounding areas have a really strong network of support. They meet monthly, I know Brad meets with this group. They work very closely with the county and the state offices of sustainability, and they share a lot of information back and forth, and it just, I thought we picked up a lot of great information. Was there anything you wanted to say about that meeting?
Sure, yeah. The one thing that I took away from that meeting was, this time next year could be a very different political landscape, and all that money that we're hoping will keep flowing may not keep flowing. So, I mean, Inflation Reduction Act, a new executive, a new executive administration could change very quickly what they're planning to do.
I don't know how likely that, it depends on how it was structured, I think.
Yeah.
If the money keeps flowing or not, I'm not sure.
To some degree.
I think legally, it's a matter of, we talk about having things encumbered versus just planned for. I think encumbered is good.
No, we're thinking of the federal funding is supposed to last through twenty thirty-two.
Right, and that's what I'm saying, but in case there was a change of heart at the federal level and any money that hadn't been secured, they could stay, there is, there is actually a possibility that has been discussed.
Right.
And they could make take action to try to either reclaim some of that unspent money, so.
So that was the, for chilling information I kind of heard during that discussion. I think whatever we can do to jump on that money sooner, the better.
Yeah, agreed. Okay, anyone else on sustainability? Then we will go to committee reports, Alder Holmquist.
There's Public Safety meeting on Wednesday, and I believe that is all for the month.
Nancy?
Please, first of all, just in response to Rick and Teresa's report, I would just say, well, it's certainly not all related to sustainability. I believe that Brad Boone is responsible for pulling in well over a million dollars, probably in last year, so we do write, we do write grants, not that there's not more out there, but we write a lot of grants in pursuit, and I'm grateful to Brad for all of his work in that regard, because he too more than pays for his position in the grant city rights. But my other mention is that I'm pleased to report that the Transit Commission did, in fact, come to a conclusion at the last meeting with respect to a recommendation for the city council, which, and we've been working on the documentation since then, and I believe we're hoping to have it on the docket for the first time on December fourth.
Wonderful. Lot of hard work.
Lot of hard work. Alder Wood?
Just a couple of things, license review did not meet, but you may have read in the news that the state senate sort of out of the blue passed that comprehensive alcohol law revision last week. So we have asked Eileen for future meetings, that we have a meeting that had that on the agenda to sort of discuss how that might impact what we do at LRC. The other thing I would just note, the pickleball, pickleball courts, tennis courts next to the pool will be closed once we get a covering, you know, snowstorm. In other words, there has been a little bit of damage in the last couple of years from people shoveling the courts. I actually was kind of skeptical until I actually went and walked all the way around the courts, and you'd see little deans here and there, and yeah, so. But obviously, fortunately, we've been, had really good weather so far. But once it happens, they'll be closed down.
Alder Radamacher?
Landmarks, we did not meet this past month. There was just no pressing matters that really were rising to the occasion. We just didn't want to pull on our staff resources more than we need to, we want to be mindful of that. Thor is working on a lot of things related to landmarks, and he'll just keep working on that without, without the committee meeting, which is just perfectly fine. Tourism met, we had a great meeting, we did some, I don't know, I guess you might say a little like long-range planning, brainstorming ideas, possible uses of funds, and came to a decision that we would have more of a quarterly rhythm of our cycles of meeting and application process, which I thought was a wonderful, wonderful way to do things. Community media met, and we had, let's see here, we just talked a lot about, you know, continuing promotions of the newsletters, some, you know, marketing things that we were thinking of doing just to get the word out. The newsletter continues to really grow, it's wonderful. We had just some report outs from the things that our community media folks are doing, just some troubleshooting with equipment at the school and the Silver Edition at the, at the high school studio. If you're looking at your Menona Go app, it's kind of fun to watch some of those videos that they're putting together. VMO is doing a lot of work with outreach, publicity, reaching out to local area businesses. They're starting a monthly show at the Harmony Bar, which is kind of interesting to hear that. There's some new shows on VMO, there's one called Under the Covers, and it's all cover music, cover songs, it's kind of fun. There's a Jazz Brunch with Grandma Sid, Old Time Echoes, which features pre-electronic age recordings, so like really, really old, scratchy sounding records. Conectados continues to be really well-received. I always listen to VMO when I'm working, and I just happened to catch the Conectados program, and I just, I had to like stop what I was doing and shoot a text over to a couple of people. It's like a Spanish language lesson, it's so darn fun to like hear the two languages back and forth, and you just sort of remember all the stuff that you learned back in high school. It was great. Sustainability, we did not meet this past month because we just opted to instead focus on just sort of work group meetings. We've got our autumn campaign that's wrapping down with the Leaf Collection. Thor and Brad and Alder Bernstein and I met just to do a debrief. This is one of those things where you never want to step on the toes of Public Works. I know Stormwater Management is really Brad's wheelhouse, and we just wanted to make sure that we were not crossing over and creating more work for him, both in the autumn campaign and then moving forward to the winter salt campaign. And then finally for, oh, and then the winter salt campaign folks will be meeting as well. And finally, with the DEIB Report Implementation Committee, thank you Administrator, to, for your, that Facebook page is amazing, and I just saw the post you put up about the November thirtieth meeting. Here in the library, six o'clock, it will be a community listening session where everyone's invited to come and hear and share your thoughts related to the implementation of the city's first-ever report on equity and diversity issues that our community faces. So November thirtieth, six PM, here in this room. And those are my committees.
Thank you. Alder Bernstein?
No report?
City Administrator?
No report.
Eileen?
Yes, candidate packets are available in my office to pick up. Candidates can start circulating papers December first. They're due in my office by January second at five PM.
And whose terms are up this time?
Alder Radamacher, Alder Holmquist, and Alder DePula.
I guess I just have a couple of things. I've just, over the past few weeks, I mean, we are just seeing so much stuff finally coming to fruition here.
Yeah.
Which is really nice, and I, I just want to thank everyone who's been involved. I mean, we've had both budgets, we've finally got an approved designer for the public safety building project, the Bloom finished, wrapped that up, at least our end of that for the most part tonight. The San Damiano Committee is coming to an end. Within the next two months, probably, we're going to have a public information meeting in January right now, it looks like, but we're really definitely coming to finalizing that plan. The metro decision, and then the diversity implementation, hearing what they're going to be suggesting. So there's just really a lot of things that we've been working on for the past three or four years, really, some of them, and it's just nice to see some of these get completed, and then we can move on to little matters like two reverendums and whatever.
Under twenty-four, that's right.
Yeah, so just thank everybody for all their efforts, because it's definitely been a team effort, and it's really taken a while, so it's nice to see something come to conclusion. Other than that, I'd like to wish everybody happy Thanksgiving. And we have an appointments tonight, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned, thank you.